We are going to have our pledges of allegiance led by Ms. Sherri Hofpower and our invocation by Mr. Mike Wilburn. If you'll please stand. Oh, Fairview Jewel is going to lead us. They're going to help Ms. Hofpower today.
Yeah, they're just using my microphone.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, under the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Do remain standing for the invocation, please. One more.
Yeah, we have one more, but it's whatever order you want to do it.
No, go ahead.
Okay, all right. This is our Fairview Jewel creed.
I promise today to do my best in reading and math and all the rest. I respect myself and others too, and expect the best in all I do. I'm going to learn all I can, try my best, and be all I am.
Let's hear kindness and love today at Fairview Jewel. Have a great day.
Thank you for that. Would you bow with me, please? Our heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful that we live in a country where we can observe children as they learn. And Father, we thank you for those that are involved in our schools who help them each day. We ask, Father, to continue to bless the staff of our schools that they might continue to produce students like we've seen tonight. Father, we pray for those that are away from their families because of deployments. We pray for those men and women who are in service. Ask, Father, to guide and direct them, and pray that you be with the decisions tonight. For us, in the name of Jesus, we ask you. Amen.
Amen.
Hello? I'm going to read our mission. The mission of Coppers Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship. Thank you, Heather. Now we'll have citizen comments. The citizen that has signed up today is Susan Wagner. She lives in Kentner, Texas, and she's representing herself. And her topic is changes to the athletic program. And Ms. Wagner, you know not to use names. Okay, I thought you probably did.
Not my first rodeo. I would like to address the current changes or the recent changes in the athletic department. I worked for the school district for 38 years, and I held many different positions within the athletic department. When you were working to better align programs, was your athletic director, and I guess I should say that was the former district athletic director, involved in the discussions? Was she asked her opinion about realigning the athletic program or what her ideas were for the future of the athletic program? Did she have input into the press release on the changes, or was she blindsided by the changes? Did you call her in to tell her of the decisions being made to the athletic department and to her position within that department? Was she shown the respect that she has earned in her over 20 years of service to this school district by telling her what was in the press release before it went out to the public, or did you just figure she could figure out, find out, when everyone else found out? You know, no matter how you window dressed the press release by saying she would be moving into a position so that she could ensure our female student athletes received the support they need. Funny thing, that is what she has always done throughout her coaching career. And since she was athletic director, that was what she did for all student athletes in the district across all programs. When a person goes to work one morning and has the title "School District Athletic Director", and then in the late afternoon you read a press release and find out you have a different position of "Girls Athletic Director," that is a demotion. So this district thought it was best for the athletic department to take a proven winning coach, who as a head coach year after year had winning seasons, who is the 12th winningest volleyball coach in the history of volleyball in the state of Texas, has multiple players that sign letters of intent, got scholarships to Division I schools, and not only did her student athletes in the program excel athletically on the court, but also excel academically, where they received numerous acknowledgements and rewards, not only on the district level, but on the state level, who has extensive experience, who is well-respected across the state, who already is enhancing and improving programs across the board and basically demoter. But take a coach with a losing record with the district, who most districts would have let go, and promote him to a position of Assistant Athletic Director. However, is this a promotion? Because on your website, he was already listed as Assistant Athletic Director and Head Football Coach. So he wasn't really promoted to Assistant Athletic Director, but was he fired from the head coaching position? So now instead of the athletic program, instead of an athletic program, the district is going to go back to old days when you have a boys' athletic program and a girls' athletic program. So I guess there will be two separate athletic budgets. That'll be interesting to see how those compare to each other. And speaking of comparisons, is the salary of the now new girls' athletic director position, will it be more than the salary of the position of Assistant Athletic Director, or is the reverse true? I see a possible Title IX lawsuit for this district because the district is standing on legs of sand. The district has taken a winning female coach who is already doing the things that the district says is the reason why they are making changes to the athletic department and basically demoter, promotes a male coach with a losing record so he can continue to grow in his career, your words from your press release, possibly paying the male coach more than the winning female coach, whose position would be higher on an athletic chain of command chart. It is a shame that here in 2025, male coaches are still treated better than their female counterparts, that a male coach with a losing record and only in the district a few years receives a promotion and a press release extolling how wonderful he is, and the female coach with winning record, who has worked in the district for over 20 years, gets disrespected with no mention of her expertise or things that she accomplished for the school district in that press release. Where did the integrity of this school district go? Thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. All right, we will go on to good things, and we'll have our staff recognition and some student recognition.
Me?
Yes.
Where, Mr. Trigger?
Okay. I have the mic on, I swear, so I hope everyone can hear me. I'm going to do my best to project, but I make no promises. We have a large crowd tonight. We're going to start with staff recognition. We have one department that's no stranger to being at these meetings tonight, and she brought her people out here again because, surprise, surprise, our child nutrition department won more awards this week. The CCIC Child Nutrition Department has earned recognition awards, multiple of them, from the USDA Food, Nutrition, and Consumer Services and Action for Healthy Kids Initiative. They were one of only 17 in Texas school districts to earn these awards this time around for their efforts in healthy eating and healthy eating habit education. And so tonight, we'd like to welcome the CCIC Child Nutrition Department to come up for their certificate. We also have a banner provided by the USDA behind Dr. Hawkins leaning against that window that we can grab for this photo as well. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you very much. As soon as you fire it, it should flash. Okay. Our next recognition is a little awkward because it involves three people who absolutely hate being in the spotlight. Their entire job is to put other people in the spotlight. When teachers returned for the 2023-24 school year, none of the current communications department were in their current positions. It was a year of transition. These two you see standing here were in the technology department, and Shelley was working in instructional services. I was still at Channel 6. Somehow, in the span of that year, we found five pieces of work that we did to spotlight the kids in Coppers Cove, mostly done by these two, to win star awards from the Texas School Public Relations Association. We won five of them last week. And so now, joining me tonight is Matt Thompson, he's the one with the tie, and Cole Witter. Okay, now to the fun stuff. Our student recognition. You see a lot of certificates tonight. We estimate we have about 100 students here to be recognized tonight, so I'm not going to try to waste anybody's time. We start with a couple of teams. The Coppers Cove High School Cheer Squad went to the UIL State Cheer Championships in January, placing in the top 10 for the second time in three years as finalists in Class 6A. We welcome the Coppers Cove High School Cheer Squad. So, y'all, do we need to move them over here?
Y'all want to move over here?
Yeah.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
We are bulldogs.
We are bulldogs. We are bulldogs.
Okay, roll it right along. In the past couple of years, Fairview Jewel Elementary School has established an archery team that has been competing in the area. They have two students who this year have qualified for the state championships in archery. And so please join us in celebrating Sofia Pineda and Victoria Arardo. Our next two groups of students that we welcome for celebration are two of our junior high bands who had, I think it was 70 combined students qualified for the all-region band. When we do these for the students coming in, as well as for the members of the board, what we are going to do is recognize each student individually by name, but we will do one group photo at the end for each campus. So we'll do Cove Junior High first, do a photo at the end, then we'll do the same thing with SC Lee. So starting with Coppers Cove Junior High, in the regional wind ensemble, second chair oboe was Sierra Wells. Okay. Okay. Third chair trombone, Jennifer Kinney. First chair trombone, CJ Subilli. Third chair trombone, Avery Outen. Avery Outen. In the symphonic band, seventh chair flute, Ranzel Blackburn. First chair oboe, Amalia Brandonberg. First chair bassoon, Lila Castillo. Fourth chair trombone, Kaylee Schultz. Second chair euphonium, Riley Oclavio. In the regional concert band, seventh chair flute, Charlotte Perez. Thirteenth chair clarinet, Hayden Newman. Tenth chair trumpet, Josiah Fuentes. Second chair trombone, Alistair Lambeth. Second chair tuba, Hector Santiago. And third chair tuba, Alya Davis. Other qualifiers from Cove Junior High who weren't able to join us tonight: Sierra Wells, Tyler Pack, Janelle Aldridge, Julian Aguilar. In the wind ensemble, in the symphonic band, Phoebe Smith, Fabian Arevalo, Samantha Avillan, and Sophie Gonzalez. In the concert band, Claire Tom, Kylie Wykam, Isabella Fioni, Allison Broski, Reed Hamontry, Emma Vertifuli, and Lila Rosales. All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations.
Can you look at this chair? She was third chair French horn.
French horn, yes.
Jennifer Kinney. We got it. Okay. We'll get it.
Okay. Right. I did. I cranked it. I'll try it again. I can hear it when I move. All right. I swear I've been wearing it all night. From SC Lee Junior High, celebrating all-region band selections in the wind ensemble, second chair flute, Landon Lee. First chair clarinet, Hugo Rosas. Seventh chair clarinet, David Flores. Ninth chair clarinet, Dorian Teetz. First chair bass clarinet, Kirk Farnum. First chair Barry Sax, Michael Chandler. Second chair trumpet, Robert Burton. First chair French horn, Grace Powell. And for the second time, first chair euphonium, Zion Darnell. Third chair percussion, Con Wim. Okay, we've got a few more from SC Lee before we do photos. Sixth chair percussion, Taurus Graves. In the symphonic band, third chair flute, Myelani Alvarado Rivera. Fourth chair flute, Alya Farnum. Fifth chair clarinet, Anisa Hamilton. First chair trumpet, Maxwell Holland. First chair euphonium, Jacob Edmonds. Second chair tuba, William Chauvin. Second chair percussion, Beau Schleicher. In the concert band, second chair bassoon, Anne Marie Hammett. Alternates, 11th overall alto sax, John Michael Thompson. On French horn, Anna Leslie Joffreant. And on tuba, Holden Muse. Band members from SC Lee who qualified and weren't able to make it tonight, on clarinet, Corey McCaskill, on trumpet, Hannah Sanders, on tuba, Anthony Reese, on flute, Ava Anchetta, on flute, Ruben Medina, on clarinet, Angel Cupo, Reggie Leve, and Brooklyn Kruger, on alto sax, Carson Caldwell, on French horn, Gabriel Sanchez, on clarinet, Kylie Vance, on trombone, Timothy Tran, on euphonium, Josai Walwin, on tenor sax, Messiah Lewis, on trumpet, Noah Spitzer, on French horn, Chloe Landers, on trombone, Jayla Kulanges, Quincy Jones, and Aubrey Chen. All right, everyone, right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Thank you all very much, congratulations. Alright. Okay. Okay. Continuing right along, we still have a few recognitions left. Our next one is a team, the Copper's Cove High School Boys Basketball Program, which placed third in District 12-6 in the 2024-25 season, advancing to the UIL Class 6A playoffs. They snapped a nine-year playoff drought by qualifying this year, went on a historic seven-game win streak, and beat Waco Midway for the first time in 16 years. Boys, can I ask you to take a step back? Alright everyone right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Alright. Congratulations. Our next team being recognized tonight is the Copper's Cove High School Swimming and Diving Team, which this year had several athletes qualify for the UIL Regional Competition. I would be remiss if I didn't continue Dr. Burns' tradition of reminding everyone that they cannot practice in Copper's Cove and have to bus out of the city to practice and compete. Alright, congratulations. Our final team being recognized tonight is the Copper's Cove High School Wrestling Program, which advanced to UIL Regional and State Competition. While they're bringing in, there are some individual highlights that we'll read off as well. Lilian Hoagland earned sixth place at the regional wrestling competition and advanced to state. Haley Poser won sixth at regionals and advanced to state. David Hughes won sixth place at UIL Regionals and advanced to state. Corbin Porter earned fifth place at regionals and advanced to state. And Evelyn Stack won fourth place at region and then placed sixth in the state. We'll get everyone in with the board over here. In with the board members. I love that you guys brought the belt. Alright everyone right here. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Shelley, did we get everybody? Shelley, did we get everyone? We got everyone. That's recognitions tonight, thank you very much.
Okay, we have lots of seats in here. If anybody's gonna sit down, now we have seats, right? Well, of course, I always say the best part of our meeting is over now. We will get through the next part really quickly. And I always like to mention that we do have a workshop the day before our regular meeting. So we're able to get through our regular meeting quickly besides recognitions, which we are happy if they went on all night. That's wonderful, we're happy about that. But our regular meeting does go rather quickly because we've discussed what we needed to discuss yesterday and asked questions. So on our consent agenda, it's a large consent agenda, so y'all just listen if you don't mind. And this is what's on it. First of all, our Board of Trustees meeting minutes for our workshop meeting February 10, 2025, our regular meeting February 11, 2025, our board workshop meeting February 17, 2025. Under personnel, we have a list of new hires for March of 2025. We have a list of resignations for instructional personnel for March 2025. Then we have a list of personnel vacancies, support personnel for March 2025. We have a couple of items exceeding $25,000. The first is renewal of Naviance Power School software for Copper's Cove ISD Secondary Schools. This is TIPS RF 210101, May of 26 it goes to. And then it's $31,449.94. This is from budgeted funds. We have renewal of Fortinet. And this is CDW quote number PHG B380. A TIPS contract 230105 for $31,935, again from budgeted funds. Under finance, we will consider and approve the financial statements and payment of bills. And we will also consider and approve the Copper's Cove ISD 2025-2026 school calendar. 7F, which is on the consent agenda, will consider and approve the hiring authority for the superintendent through August 31 of 2025. And then consider action to approve standard form of agreement between owner Copper's Cove ISD and a new architect GLS. This is document B101-2017. And then we'll consider and approve the revised board operating procedures. And consider and approve the Texas Strategic Staffing for Sustainable Pay Teacher Residency Programs. And this is a discretionary grant. We'll consider and approve to add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by TASB Policy Service according to the instruction sheet for TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 124. And consider and approve a recruitment stipend for CCISD employees. I might get Dr. Hawkins to explain this because this is something new. And consider and approve a wage and benefits study proposal, which they have started already. So do you mind just talking about the stipend a minute?
So recruitment has become extremely difficult, as you know, with staffing shortages in every facet of public education and in some businesses across the nation. And so this is an opportunity for staff members to recruit people who are friends and colleagues of them that they know that shares the same values and work ethic to come be part of their team or work family. And what it is, is that for every professional employee that's recruited, that person gets a $500 stipend paid on the, and I can't remember if it's August or September check. So you can stack multiple stipends for multiple points of hire. And the only exempt people are the points of decision-making in the hiring process. So like principals aren't qualified for it, HR folks aren't qualified for it, I'm not qualified for it, and so on, so on. So anyone else in the school district that recruits a professional person into the district contracted employee, then you are able to, you're eligible for that recruitment package.
Something new and kind of, if you're the kind of person that likes competition, likes to see how many things you can do at one time, you're gonna do great with that. And that's good for CCISD. So we have all of those items that we did talk about yesterday. And is there any that needs to be taken out at all that anybody would like to talk about anymore? If not, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam President, move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gallin, a second by Mr. Traeger. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And he opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We have several information items. We have campus reports from all our campuses. And then we have a sped report, athletics report, operations report, safety and security report, technology report, and our Board of Trustees calendar for March, April, and May. Please remember tomorrow, if you are able, at 3 o'clock, we have an entities meeting here in the boardroom for all the different entities in Copper's Cove. And then we have a discussion item, and this is to discuss, and this is just discussion, and think about a fine arts director. And Jeff is the one that has brought this up at...
Madam President, before we move on to that, let me just, under reports, Dr. Shuck, I believe you have somebody to introduce?
Yes, sir. The Thomas Hare is here. He's our new director of maintenance. And so I wanted to be able to recognize him stepping up as that world-class assistant director. He's done tremendous job. Been in the district for a long time. And we look forward to doing great things.
Okay, thank you so much. I saw Mr. Hare here and I thought, I knew kind of why he was here and I just forgot. So thank you, Dr. Hawkins, for interrupting me. You had your speech already too? Oh. I just had to josh with you.
Jimmy didn't tell you about the speech?
He did not.
Oh, okay.
We're happy to have you and excited about that.
I'm excited too. Ready to go.
Good. Alright, so we will discuss a fine arts director. And I have left that to Jeff to leave that discussion. If anybody else would like to chime in, you're welcome to. But right now, we're gonna listen to Jeff for a little bit.
Get this mic on. There it is. Madam President, thank you. You know, the discussion of a director of fine arts, nothing new. And before I start, I want to revisit our vision and mission statement. You know, our vision statement, Copper's Cove ISD, a foundation of excellence and a future of success. We already heard our mission statement. Mission of Copper's Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction, which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship. Over the years, we have aligned positions across the district to meet ever-changing requirements focusing on what is in the best interest of the students. We are the district of choice for Central Texas. Just since last week, I had a peer that moved to our district specifically for our schools. And he has not been here for several years. We offer exceptional opportunities across its town population. Recently, the pride of Cove led by Ms. Norris recently had nearly 20 band students make all area band. And the voices of Cove led by Mr. Gates and Mr. Parker had many students make area and were elected for state as well. Our visual arts dance teams all enjoy success year in, year out. I believe the director of fine arts will build upon this foundation of excellence, advocating and supporting the aspirations and goals of all our fine arts students. Consideration the director of fine arts will provide a unifying and collaborative oversight across the district from our elementary schools through our high school.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Just a comment, fine arts is becoming more and more important as kids get up as seniors in high school and start applying for college or going on doing other things. Society's looking for well-rounded individuals. And fine arts provides a lot of that. A lot of those students excel. They get lots of scholarships and stuff like that. And I'm with Jeff, I think we need a fine arts director to oversee the program within the district. And I think it's a good deal because of the importance of fine arts.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else want to say anything? I believe this is something that we'll look further at during budget time in the summer. Right now would be kind of an odd time to add a position when we're going through a staffing study. Right, we're going through a staffing study. And but I think it's something that we, well, I know it's something that we'll definitely consider during the budget time in the summer. So I appreciate y'all's comments. If anybody else has anything they'd like to say, you're welcome to. Okay. Alright. Alright, at this time, hey, that's pretty good after all those recognition. We're adjourning our meeting at 7:18 PM. Everyone have a good evening, thank you for coming.